Side streets off of 410, the Red Brick, where the Red Brick fence is, or fence on the other side, where the Ivywood Circle is, all these areas that are being taken care of, which I do not believe were being adequately taken care of, simply because the sanitation department had other better things to do.
Douglas, once again, we're in this he said, she said. This used to be something that was practiced a few months ago, that I've had phone calls and I've heard this and that. And I one time have I ever heard a complaint, this is the first time I have ever heard a complaint regarding any type of lawn service with this city. And I'd like to know who these people are. Would you give me their names so I can call them?
I've never said there was a complaint of the lawn service. What I have said is there were quite a few complaints about how, especially over an Ivywood Circle-
Would you send me those names? Because I'd like to talk to them.
I'll have to go and look, but I'm sure-
Please do.
-I can round up a whole slug of them.
Because, you know, every time you bring up, or in the past has been brought up, I've had several phone calls, or whatever it is, these phone calls never materialize. Who are these people? Who are these people calling?
The bottom line is, the bottom line is, Tim, if you ask people whether or not the appearance of the city is better now than it was two, or three, or four years ago, and you ask people around the city, is the city looking better, the appearance is looking better, for $20,000, I think you will get, ask anybody, you can pick them yourself, they'll say it looks substantially better than it did two, three, or four years ago.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion, based on the things I'm reading lately, floating out there in the public, you know, the city is in shambles. We're broke, we're mishandling money, we're not sending money to the proper sources. Suzanne, what is the net worth of the city right now?
After looking at it this morning, we're a little over $8 million in the bank.
$8 million. So that's where we're at. Hmm. Interesting. Mr. Mayor, just as a last follow-up, then I presume that you didn't have the personnel, and once you had the personnel, you feel like you could take care of the property in a proper manner. Is that correct?
Yes.
I would suggest that council, when we're going through this, listen to our department heads, and that's what we're here to do. That's what we're elected to do, is to listen to our department heads, and also go through and make sure that it's, that it's something that's good for the city, and that we can not only support our departments, but also support our area. I haven't seen any difference in the maintenance myself. So if there anybody else has, let me know. Can I have another question?
Of course.
Or you can come back to me. Mr. Shands, and again, this may be deferred to the chief. Our court income last year for 16 was estimated at $700,000. It looks like we're going to probably do six and a quarter, something like that. So in proposing 650, which is a deduction of $50,000, how, I mean, it's difficult. I didn't know why you had $700,000 as a compared to 2015, because between 2015, up to 6, up to 2017, or excuse me, over this year, that's quite an increase in income that we've been getting. And so, did you just overestimate last year for the $700,000? It looks like you're coming closer to about six and a quarter or so. And that in itself would still be over $100,000 increase.
Yes, sir. That was a little high number. We look, we feel more comfortable with the 650s, more realistic approach, going into 17.
Okay. But it was high last year?
Yes, sir.
But it's still a strong increase for one. And I realize the important thing of the whole, is it, is the safety and well-being of the citizens. It's not about the dollars. And quite frankly, I know that you've asked for an additional slot for an officer. How long have you been at, what are you, 21, 20 slots?
21.
And how long has the department been at 21 slots?
Well, we just, you, you may remember Officer Lemon was our last hire, which was several months ago at the A&amp;M graduates that we just hired. And then, we're just finally becoming more stable and getting fully staffed as we move forward. And the slot, moving forward into 17, we discussed quite, quite amount of detail, actually, at the workshops, if you recall.
Well, with the additional load, I've seen over, in your chart that you presented to us, and you're only asking for one more officer, and again, excuse me, revenue is not the issue, I believe. I believe the issue is, what do we need as far as protecting our city? And your accident, my gosh. You've just got quite an additional load on your plate, but you think one additional person is all we're going to need at this time?
Well, we'd like, I'd rather ease into something than, than jump into it, and establish as we go, and get our footing as we move forward. I think it's, it may be unreasonable to ask for two, three, four slots. We need to move forward slowly and cautiously.
Well, I see your arrests are up 31% from a couple of years ago, and you're still working with the same staff. Now, you say narcotics, 33% increase. Does that mean we're stopping more people that have narcotics on them, and we're having to deal with that? And if we do that, then what do we, would they end up having to go downtown? But we just get them out of our city, get the narcotics, put it in the, in the holding area, stuff like that?
Yes, sir.
That, that would not increase our revenue. We just got to do our job.
That is correct, yes. We have to address the issue when we run across it on the street.
Absolutely. Okay. That's all right now. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Squire.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna divert, I'm gonna diverge from where I really wanted to go here, but I wanted to kind of follow along on Mr. Paul's line of questioning, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Again, on the addition of the, of the officer that you're requesting. Number one, I personally support that. I think you, with the wider geographic area that you're now able to patrol and, and help protect the city, I think that's a, that is a very, that's very positive. And I don't know if most people know that you are now able to patrol to the benefit of the city outside the city limits. Can you explain what you're doing now that you weren't doing six months ago, please?
Well, we, we tried to keep everybody in the loop on the SB 631, Senate Bill 631. And basically, what it allows our police to do is to patrol, not only patrol our perimeter streets up to 200 yards outside of our city, but also to act upon violations of a Class C misdemeanor status, which is traffic enforcement, if you want to get right down to it. That in and of itself keeps our perimeter safer, and, and we've seen nothing but positive results from that, from a lot of residents, and schools especially, have come forward and thanked us for that. And we knew that was going to, or we thought that was going to be one of the benefits from moving forward with this project. That in and of itself increases call volume, or call activity, police calls. We're not necessarily working accidents on those perimeters. We're handling those accidents in our city limits. So SB 631 allows us the opportunity to patrol the perimeter streets of Castle Hills, and keep them safer by enforcing traffic violations.
Thank you. Where are you seeing the most activity on the perimeter of the city?
Well, all of our perimeters are busy streets, so it's likely-
I mean, most, either, how do you phrase it, arrest activity, or where, where you're having to actually intercede?
Well, the patrol officers try to enforce it at all areas of our perimeters. We see a lot of traffic on Jackson Keller, a lot of activity on Jackson Keller, between West Avenue and Blanco. Blanco is pretty active.
Blanco, Blanco where? South of 410?
From Jackson Keller, all the way to Lock Hill Selma, on the other side of 410.
Okay.
That area is pretty active, and then likely Lock Hill Selma stretch from Blanco to Military would probably be number three on the list, if you were to rank the activity level.
With Jackson Keller being number one?
Probably, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. And I appreciate that. I mean, I'll freely admit, I'm rather biased to the southern cone of the city, as it's called, and I want to continue to see that level of protection, because I want to feel safe.
Right. And we didn't, we, it was, it was very difficult for us to forecast what type of activity and enforcement actions we were going to take, because we've never done it before. We did not have a baseline to work off of. But when we started looking at, at our percentage increases for calls and narcotics arrests, and total police calls in and of itself, I mean, there definitely was an increase, and the only thing that has changed in our operation was SB 631. So a reasonable thought process on that would be, that is a result of some increase in the city police force.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Shands, one of the things that I don't have a current one of is a org chart of the city, and I'd like to, I'd like to request that council, if we don't, to make sure council has, and continues to get a current updated org chart of all employees and positions in the city, so we can kind of keep better tabs on who's, you know, in what position here, and what the potential job function is of those individuals. Mr. Shands, I'd also like your opinion. I know you bring a breadth of experience to the table in regards to your previous work within the city, and also your last city that you, that you served in. In the, in the budgets that you have seen, and you've had a chance to go ahead and go over this with a fine-tooth comb, I believe, I'm curious of your opinion on the budget, and what we may need to do, if we need to get in conversation later, what we can do to help improve it if we need to.
Well, about that fine-tooth comb, but, but by the time I got here last month, it was substantially complete. I have no, I think, I think it's a good-
Let me back up and say a brush, not a comb. How's that?
Okay. Good, much better choice of words. I like that. You're correct. And I, I think it's, it's a maintenance budget. It's one of those things that if you really look at what we mentioned in the budget, once you add in the 3% colas, and employees are our greatest expense, obviously, once you look at the increases and even the reductions we made in some of the areas, such as in court, where we realized that $700,000 didn't work in 2015, didn't work in 2016, is not going to work in 2017, taking everything into account, and look at where we get most of our money from, which everybody knows, taxes, sales tax, and adwaren taxes, and permits is, is, is an addition there. I think, I think the staff did a real good job of putting the budget together. Overall, I would say that's something that we should be able to rely on through 2017, recognizing that we're still 16 months away from seeing the end of this budget. So just like with the 2016, we're going to see an adoption of a change, I hope, eventually, probably within another month or so, that we'll make it more clear where we are saving money, or not spending money, and move the, move all of that money over to where we are likely to go over budget by the end of the year. And that'll happen again in 2017. But it's a, it's, it's an acceptable, very good shot at predicting what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. So, a couple of items I want to go ahead and, and bring up. I mean, you know, Mr. Gregory, there was, you mentioned about the, the appearance of the city, and I kind of take pride in the fact that we have pushed to make sure our city is, is looking better, looking sharper than three, four years ago, when, when I first, when I first got on here. And so, there was a cost to do that, and I'm, I'm in favor of doing it the most efficient way we possibly can. If, if the city staff can handle it better than the contractors, then I'm for that. If, if we can bring in contractors and supplement that, and we need that, I'm, I would be, I would be for that also. But I think we have made great strides, but I think it's because of, because of some of the focus we've actually put back on, on moving our city forward, and making it look like the city it should be, not what it had become in the past. So I appreciate you bringing that up. You know, we have to listen to our citizens. We're here for the citizens. We're here to work with the departments and the department heads. There are, there are a responsibility to represent the citizens. And, you know, there's a lot of money here that we spend. I have to push to spend a lot of it, and, and that's a burden, but the city, the money should not set in the city. It should be put back into the infrastructure of, of the city, in my opinion. And so, it's a tough, it's a, basically, it's a tough position to be in. So, in talking about, about personnel, there was, there was mention of a assistant police chief position for the fire department. And Chief, I want to, I'd like to address that with you, too. I know you, that's fine, yeah. I know you, you brought up about trying to bring somebody in at a reasonable rate to get them trained, and, and I also know there were some options that were discussed, too, that would, that may help move that along. Are you familiar with what I'm discussing?
I'm not sure about, about the options. I did, as far as assistant chief, I did budget in there for a six-month period. It would sunset upon my retirement. I do have made it publicly known, I plan on retiring next year at the end of April, and I just wanted a couple of months to, my thought process is if, if we promoted from within, would allow that person to take, to come, step up in January, and in turn, would allow them to hire new staff with their guidance, and promote officers up in, in the subsequent position. So that would be ready by the end of April.
So what we'd have is a, is a, for lack of better terms, a temporary assistant chief position-
Temporary, right.
-that would, that would go away after, once, once you retire-
That's correct.
-in six months?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that's a, that's a proper move, to help train the person properly in that position. And then going forward, we would not have that position, so we would not have that ongoing expense. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. I wanted to clarify that. I don't think people realize that that's, that's what you were looking to do.
Just, just a temporary, temporary position.
Okay, all right. That's one question I have on that. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Gregory, and, and Mr. Paul brought it up, but I want to go ahead and recap the different, the difference in the sanitation, in the gross salaries for the sanitation. Could we go ahead and explain that again? What the increase is for? Is that, is that just because they're going to be doing the, the plan was to them to do the maintenance work on the, or, I'd like to know what that $40,000 is, that approximately $40,000 is. I'd like to verify that.
The $40,000, in the sanitation department, the $40,000 you're talking about is from the 193 in 2016 to the 230 in 2017?
The requested for the 232 in 2016. That's correct.
Right. That is for the two positions that were not eliminated. They were simply not filled. And this would give him, make it clear that they didn't get eliminated, they were simply not filled, and he will be able to fill them in 2017.
So, we have never had employees in that position, or we have not had employees in that position for a period of time?
Not for a while. Rick, you want to talk about that?
Yes, sir. As I explained in my 2015, as it, to proposal of 2016, we have a hardship on that because of the fact that we have great resumes, but unfortunately, they just come back with bad backgrounds that would make the city look not proper to go ahead and get them hired. So it's sometimes a little bit difficult to get them.
Okay. Is, and it's something that we, we do need to cover those positions. We need both positions covered, in your opinion. And Mr. Shands, can you, can you comment on that also?
Well, my, my thoughts, it would be great to have those positions back. As you all know, that when Mayor Smiley was here, and Rita was here, they, they thought about getting an admin for my, for my department, which, you know, I took care of 11 years. And I was kind of like struck under the belt with that. But you know what? At the end, I found out it was worth it, because of the fact that we ended up getting software or cardiograph that we ended up purchasing and moving on. And all the admin work that my assistant is now helping me with, to go ahead and get street work involved, and all our infrastructures of new streets that are coming into play here, as to having them chosen and taken, put together.
Rick, I'm just, we're focusing on sanitation only at this point?
I'm sorry? Oh, you're right, sir. And I'm sorry, but that was, that was one of the, the persons that got filled from my sanitation position, because of the fact that that person was hired on, on a part-time basis. They were getting paid out of that sanitation employee until, until the time would come that, that we would finally hire an employee. But then we hired her full-time. So that's where that sanitation employee or monies went to. And then the other one was, the second one that was vacant, then it got brought on to, we're saying about the salaries, again, of the $40,000 that's added on, that the employees were always there.
Okay.
Before I made myself clear on that.
Okay. What I would ask, and thank you, Rick. Mike, do you care to comment, or this is something that, that, would you like to investigate a little further?
Let me clarify one thing quickly. If you, if, and I'm taking in your comments about a staffing chart. If you look at the staffing chart that we currently have, it shows we have in sanitation, two drivers, four collectors. One, one guy driving, two guys on the back. What he has now are two drivers, two collectors. So that means either one truck goes out with two, if they have a particular problem, or you go out with one. So you've got one guy who's doing all the pickup, and we really need two for that. Now, what does that mean? It means that we go back to where these guys aren't working all day long. They will probably get off with two people back there. They should finish, generally speaking, two or three hours early. We then use them in other parts of public works. So you're getting the benefit of having a more efficient pickup, having people that you can use for other services. If you've looked at the commons today, you've seen a lot of work that they did over there, getting prepared for the clock that's coming, and Perry Burnham's clock. And I know there's been comments about this, and so I would say, I talked to San Antonio today, because I thought, this is interesting. How do you all handle yours? And I said, and especially I'm concerned about, I'd like to know how much you pay. And what's really interesting is that we pay about what San Antonio does. They pay a little bit more, because they, they, our guys, for example, are classified in San Antonio, those who run the tractor, those who run the front-end loader, do, do things like that, who run the equipment, are classified as equipment operators. They pay their equipment operators a lot more money. But they also do the same thing we do. They hire maintenance workers, which they just call maintenance, which can do anything from janitorial work to repairs, to street work, to things like that. And they pay them, they pay all their employees a minimum of $13 an hour. So about 27, where we, where we start, ours 27, 28. But they also have said, they've seen the value of having those people cross-trained and available for other work. So I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that four days a week really hitting it, and also on the days when you do brush picking, things like that, two people on the back is not a bad deal. If you got one person out, just one, you've lost a street worker. Because that's who, that's the only person you have to choose from. At some point, we get down and we choose Rick. Say, Rick, can you get on, can you ride on the back of a truck still? And then he comes and asks me if I'll go with him. And we don't want that to happen.
Okay. So just to, just to kind of sum it up, and I thank you for taking the time to explain that. Those, these two positions are needed, and you support these two positions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just wanted, I wanted a good understanding of that, and I appreciate that. Okay. One of the things I want to mention is, is there's, there's all these accounts, and there's the account that Douglas Gregory has created, the, the, what's it called? The infrastructure account, I guess is what it's, what it's being called?
Mm-hmm.
See if I-
Public infrastructure.
Public, public infrastructure account. Now, I disagree with Mr. Gregory in that, I got, I got a comment, and I do it respectfully, but I think we have too many accounts in the city as it is. I know we have to have a certain amount to properly utilize the funds, but in my opinion, the more accounts you have, the more cloudy the, the situation becomes, and the more ways things could be deemed nefarious. I just don't like, I, I think it's cleaner to have, have stuff come out of one account. I think we had an issue previously, where people were not being informed, like they were being directed to. And, and I'm glad that, I'm glad that Douglas made a point of it, that we make sure we are informed of, of things that are, that are happening, especially when larger dollars are, are involved with it. And, and I'm, I'm, I was angry that, that kind of, that kind of information was not being passed on, like it was being told to be passed on. So again, I appreciate Mr. Gregory's, Mr. Gregory's thoughts on that. But in regards to the accounts, you know, I want it stated, I want to make sure it's understood, we have these separate street and drainage accounts, and almost any project I do, or I help, not I do, I'm sorry, but I, but I, I help to move along, involve streets and drainage. And, and in my opinion, to try, to try to segregate those drainage and the streets issues, you have to almost guess at a percentage of what is drainage and, and what is street sometimes. It becomes very cumbersome. And I would be in favor, not this would move forward, I would be in favor of making sure that we start to combine these accounts the way they were, to have a street and drainage account, so we can do these projects properly, and, and not start pulling a little bit from this account, a little bit from this account, at some sort of subjective amounts. Second of all, on this public infrastructure, we could, we could have it. I don't see, I don't see value in it. It was fine in the, in the street, street maintenance account. And the, I think the approval levels were fine on it, too. I just think the issue was the fact the information wasn't being conveyed, which was a huge issue, in my opinion. Now, I also, on 950, on 9052, we've had a practice of utilizing the account to almost take care of any and all parts in the city. As I understand it, those, those monies have been used for more than streets for decades. And I'm thinking the commons, been used for work, for work on the commons. Been worked, also, we use it for work on the streets, I mean, on the alleys, and we use for, for parking lot repairs in the past. We've used it for, for, for a lot. I don't like the name of the account, because it doesn't necessarily work to, to what we need to get done in our city. And I would ask that we either modify the name to accurately reflect that this is horizontal-type public works projects that are going on, or come up with an appropriate terminology to actually affect the work we're doing, so we can transparently work on our alleys, and our streets, and, and the other areas, including the commons, that we, that we do work on. And we have lots in the city that we own, that we do work on. We clear out, and we do maintenance work on those, too. I would make sure we restrict it to where it's just for horizontal-type work, not for somebody to come in and put an air-condition unit in, or, or, or do building-related work. I make sure that it is that type of work. That, that's, that was the intention in the first place. Okay. Finally, I want to thank Ms. Winger for sending out a, an email. I wish I would have received it, because she brought up a lot of very good questions in her email. One of the things that, that she did, that she did bring up is, and I, and I expressed my dissatisfaction, is that I could, I think we charge a phenomenal amount for permits to do roofing. And I think that should be more in line with, with our neighbors. I know San Antonio is less, and Ms. Winger brought up that it's, what, that's a $25 roof permit to redo a roof. Why are we charging $600, $700, $800, $900, $1,000 for a roofing permit to do a roof? You know, does it, does it really justify that? I don't agree with it. And I think, I think it should be corrected, and should reflect what, what the actual work is involved to, to do the roofing permits. What that number is, I think that needs to be discussed. But I would ask that that be reviewed, and, and properly brought forward.
May I respond to that? Is it okay?
Yes, please do.
Let me bring, bring some of it forward now, because this will also give you additional information to decide how we should proceed. It's all over the board, all around, all the cities. Alamo Heights, for example, doesn't even charge a roofing permit. They don't even inspect them. They said if it's a re-roof with same materials, just do it. They treat it more like it's something that needs to be done immediately. They, they also recognize that that also means that there is an element of protection that they're dropping from having their people taken advantage of, perhaps. But it also seemed to them that it was unnecessary to charge for something that is so simple as just doing a roof. You're right. Doesn't take a lot of inspections, doesn't take a lot of effort on their part. Universal City is on the same thing we are, just as we have charged these same fees for 20 years, because they're based on the building code, that says, these are the funds that you collect for the amount that is being spent on the project. So that's a percentage of that. Most cities probably take it the middle ground, which is just like you were, excuse me, referring to, I think San Antonio's 25. Most of, a couple of the other smaller cities around here are 40. around here are forty or fifty. So, but, but the point is, it's nothing brand new in Castle Hills. It's been like that for a long time. Doesn't mean it was right, doesn't mean it can't be changed, but it, I think the, I think the differences we're seeing now is that we're seeing a lot of roofs that cost a lot of money. And that's why the, the permits are going lockstep with exactly what it would cost to, say, build a house.
And thank you. I mean, five years ago, my roof was three thousand dollars. Now it's, you know, fifteen thousand dollars.
Exactly, no, that's true.
And, and, you know, the services haven't really changed, it's just the materials and insulation costs have gone up phenomenally.
That is correct.
So, again, I would ask that that be reviewed, and, and that we look at, at making it more reflective of, of what's really going on, and not discourage somebody to maintain their Let me see here. Mayor, that's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you very much. I want to, hang on a second. I want to springboard on something here. Of course, our first, our first and foremost must be to protect our citizens, okay? So if, if we did decide to adjust that to a, to a proper level, uh, of course, we make the rules, so it could be appropriate just to charge a twenty-five or fifty-dollar, uh, fee to have that inspection done. Because as we know, because of our recent chief, you can buy in on this, Waggy, you can too, uh, these, these roofers, these workers that are in our area, they slip through our fingers. I, I would hate to know how many jobs out there that are being done, uh, we run into them every day, that don't have a permit, whether they're building, remodeling, roofing, whatever it is. And the, and the most important thing is, is that we protect the resident. And if we, if we pull away from, from at least charging a nominal fee, which could be only the fee that, uh, um, our inspector charges us, which I believe is fifty dollars? Is that what Bruce charges us to go out and do an inspection? I think it is. Okay, whatever it is. If it's seventy-five dollars, whatever it is, you still have the policing done on the, on the situation. Because like I said, we're catching people every day who don't even have, um, um, you know, permits pulled for the city, and who knows what's going on out there. So thanks for bringing that up, John. Douglas, you had a, a comment, or?
Ask the mayor, would he, uh, I guess we should have done that at the start. Would, are we going to have another round of questions?
Yes, we'll have another round of questions after citizens', uh, input on the budget. And then, since this is informal, and we have such a large list of speakers here, um, you know, I think we can, you know, I think we can take the time to do that, to make sure we cover this completely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas, uh, John, you're done? Thank you very much. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions or comments about the budget, please?
Just a couple. Um, I like Mr. Gregory's idea of sunsetting the new positions, just to, so we look back at it, because, um, things will not stay the way they are in the future at this growth rate, and I do see that we're going to have a recession in the future also. So I like that idea. Mr. Arada, you, you said that you never had wanted the lawn service, but we're still budgeting for it in the future, and we're increasing the two positions, so I'm, still need clarity on that. Is it, are we increasing the two positions to, why are we still budgeting for the lawn service? Or was that not the intention? I know we've kind of beat this to death, but I still have, don't have clarity with that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we are still budgeting for that, because the last, previous manager had already adjusted that for that from the last year. So that still stayed on, and Mr. Chance didn't know about it until I informed him as to what was going on with that in particular, uh, cost, um, that was increased. And yes, sir, the vacancies, as Mr. Chance says, that they are there, they've always been there, but i- if you can remember, you, you all had a concern on last, the twenty-sixteen budget, as to why the high and the low kept on going back and forth, because of all the drastic changes and percentages that, that was brought forth with Mrs. File. And again, that, that was, decision was made, but in all reality, the monies was not brought properly over, and the vacancies were always there.
I understand. So do you see keeping the lawn service, or not, if we fill those two positions?
Well, I didn't really like the way it was brought forth, and I'm going to have to say, um, yes, it is helping, but that's never, that I can say that it's, that we weren't maintaining it. Tex Dot came in each time to sign those easements over, and I was there to learn what the infrastructures and maintenance decides were. So I knew it was supposed to be done. And this lawn service right now, sir, is only doing a quarter percent of the, of, twenty-five percent of what the easements are that they have to take care of, because there's still foliage involved, there's irrigation lining that has to be taken care of. My boys, we have all the equipment to go ahead and move all that stuff. They, they aren't, they're just coming in with little ride mowers. We have the five-foot shredders that are going across and can finish in double time what they can.
Okay. Mr. Chance, would you look at that, and just for the future? Oh, and the permits for roofing, yes, that is a, I agree with the mayor on that. If, if it's an exorbitant fee, you're also disencouraging people from paying that, so we'll, we'll get more people involved with that. So I would like to look at that also. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Daggett. Mr. Trevino, did you have any comments or questions for anyone?
Yes, sir, I had a couple of questions. In regards to the lawn maintenance, is that, does that apply to the area like four-ten and Northwest Military?
I'll go ahead and let you know, the four-ten and West Avenue area, the eastbound frontage road going, um, on the four-ten frontage road, and also to Northwest Military. As I mentioned just a minute ago, okay, Tex Dot came in and signed over these, these areas to me. If you note that what Mr. Gregory is saying, that sometimes it looks shabby, understand that the scouts from Tex Dot only come in on a certain period of time of the year, and if they bypass it because of the fact that we cut it, or now because the lawn service is cutting it, they're going to say everything's good to go. Now remember, we're only allowed on the frontage roads, easements. We're not allowed on the main lanes. That was instructed by the, the director there from Tex Dot, that if we were caught on there because of the fact that we don't have shredders with chains, and we don't have the proper equipment for direction of traffic, then we could be cited. So that's not the post, they're not supposed to be on the main lanes.
Thank you, Rick. I just wanted to make sure that we understood what was Tex Dot and what was ours.
Yes, sir.
Also, Mr. Shans, can you put a quantity to how many more people are getting involved in Castle Hills and moving in? I understand that we're having a transition in our demographic, and from what I understand, some of the, uh, more, uh, younger families are moving in, and I just attribute that to more traffic and more growth in the city. I don't know if it's possible for you to quantify that.
You know, what I could do is, uh, the, the, there is census data and demographic data that I can certainly research and find out if we have, uh, what current figures we have right now, that what the Census Bureau would consider current, which would probably be last April, but I can check that out, sure.
I'd appreciate that.
And I, I get the same impression you do. I think that, I think that's true.
I, I appreciate that. Mr. Councilman Douglas and I had talked before that, um, the city is not nearly as populated as it used to be, but I feel like we're making a return back onto where we once were, and I just wondered if there's any metrics for that. My last question is, do you know what the percentage is for the roofing permits, the way the fees allocated?
For the which, I'm sorry?
For the roofing permits?
It's, uh, I, I can give you, yes.
If you don't have it off the top of your head, I can look it up, I was just curious.
Let me see if I've got something like that, if I've got our numbers here. What it's based on is, is the cost of the roof. If it's, just to give you a quick example, if the roof costs between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars, at twenty-five thousand, it's four hundred and ninety-two fifty. At fifty thousand, it's eight hundred and five. So that would be roughly two percent of the cost.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. While we're on that subject, Mike, I have a, I have a couple of questions, and I have a couple of observations. First of all, um, if we did go to a, a, a flat rate of fifty dollars or seventy-five dollars, whatever the, due to the fact that I realize this, this was just brought up this evening, based on the figures you have there, what would be the impact of our budget and our income, uh, by taking, by, uh, to use a term, clawing that back?
But I'd have to look and see how many roofs we do, and how many we, we have done, and how many we've got to do yet, but to go, just as that example I gave you, it would be a, on the, what would that be, on the low end? It's going to be, it's going to be healthy.
It would be good to know, because if, you know, it is a smart idea, uh, thank you, John, uh, to get that more in line, and to be able to do that, I would sure like to know what the loss of the revenue of the city would be, uh, so maybe we could, uh, you know, just make sure that we're, hang on, just to make sure that we are, uh, you know, know what it is. Because I, I think it's, I think it's pretty substantial.
I think it will be, but, but again, we've got a seven million dollar budget, so in, in that context, it's, it's probably not, I mean, depending on what council wants, it's going to work.
Okay. Mr. Paul, do you want to make a couple of observations before I get started here?
Yeah, just talking about the, the roofs and things, the increase in permits, now we pay the inspector based upon permits, so I, that was one of the things I was going to ask you. I see a great increase. So we're anticipating, uh, obviously, that, uh, this permits for these, uh, roofs are going to continue on until the work is done, and if the work's not done, then he doesn't get paid. It's all based upon, uh, the work done, correct? He's not on our salaries, what I'm saying. He's a contract laborer, or inspector.
That's true, yes, sir.
Okay, that's a, that's why I want to think. And I will mention that, that Janet had already mentioned to me about the fact that we probably need to look at this, because she was finding out with all of these masses of, of permits coming in, that we might be too high on that, and so she's already brought, she's on top of that, too, that we need to get looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I think I'm going to save, save my comments to the end. I think that would be more appropriate, and maybe we could, we could hear from the citizens now. There's two people on this list to, that want to be heard. If there's anybody else, we're going to be lenient tonight, since we are a limited amount of people. So if you would like to speak, just please raise your hand after the first two that have, uh, signed up or, or through. We are going to limit, uh, you know, normally the comments are to three minutes, and since we got a small amount of people, we'll extend that, but we would ask that, you know, you, you keep that in mind, okay? George Booth.
Counsel, George Booth, one twenty-four Dogwood. I want to reiterate, appreciate you all considering the roofing permits. I do think it's awfully high, and you will discourage people from re-roofing. The insurance isn't paying all the fees, a lot of people have older roofs than we do, and they're only going to pay a portion of it. So I appreciate you looking into that. See, we have a new parking lot, looks nice, but unfortunately, I feel we had other streets that needed the money worse. As far as what Douglas commented on the employees, I'd really rather have part-time employees than full-time, in case there is a recession, which I do expect, that we won't be able to, we won't have to lay off people, uh, that are full-time, and simply just cut those part-time people that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Next on the list is Ms. Winger. Leslie, you're the only one on the list. Now, uh, due to Ms. Les, Ms. Winger's comments, if anyone would like to step up, Mr. Bueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. William Bueller, one oh-eight Prince Drive. Three quick comments. I think what the council brought up this evening were very appropriate, and I think a lot of hard work has been done by city staff, as well as the department heads. I, too, am the pessimist. I think we may not have a recession or a depression, but we may have a, a downturn in income and in economy, and I hope we have. I, I don't understand the budget enough to know whether we have a little reserve or, or cushion to carry forward. And the, the last comment that I have really has to do with the employee retirement program that the state of Texas, I think, manages for us. With the interest rates and income producing facility decreasing, I expect them to make a levy on us, uh, before too long, because I think our retirement fund statewide is underfunded. And they're suddenly going to say, send us two hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, don't turn white when they say that, because, uh, they don't want a IOU, they want the money. Thank you, and you all are doing a fine job.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. On that subject, I, I'd like to say that, uh, Mr. Bueller is exactly right. There's a mayor's meeting once a quarter that I attend, and there is going to be some changes on what happens there. So Douglas, uh, you tend to be in tune with that, and I would, I'd appreciate it if, maybe at the next mayor's meeting that you attend with me, okay?
Thank you. Leslie Winger, one thirty-seven Ludjohn. I would, you know, following up on what Mr. Squire said, I do think that you might want to look into what the building inspector actually does. Having had a building inspector come out to my house many times over the years, it's unclear to me what the building inspector actually does, and how that protects anybody. My roof was recently redone, a number of my neighbors had roofs redone. We never saw the building inspector. The building inspector comes by, apparently, and looks at it from his truck in the street. Well, he would have no way of knowing whether the roof was in good shape or not. The fact is that, you know, people are not stupid in this city. If you want to hire somebody to do your roof who has no reputation about, you know, being able to come back and repair something, that's your protection, the contract that you've, that you sign with the roofing company. The city is not going to do anything if your roof starts leaking. The city, the fact that you pay a permit to the city is no protection whatsoever. It never has been. It doesn't protect you on air conditioning, it doesn't protect you on roofing, it protects you on nothing. It's just a fee that the city gets. So there is no benefit to the, to the residents, and I'd like to know anybody who thinks there is, because I've never heard of anybody. Now, I want to say one more thing, because you're going to start questioning who...
You bet I will.
What?
I said I will.
Okay. Who, who, right now, you've started to question whether Douglas Gregory has ever talked to anybody, as though somehow he's lying.
I didn't use the term lying, Ms. Winger, so would you please not infer that I did?
I didn't use it, but it, but that was the inference, and the fact that...
Maybe that's your influence, it wasn't mine.
Well, you're not suppo, I'm supposed to be able to talk here.
Ma'am, you are able to talk, but you're not able to stand out there and make mistruths when we're talking about a budget hearing, which you're talking to me.
I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the council.
So you're not talking to me?
I'm talking to the council.
Okay.
Okay. Now, um, in terms of talking to you, repeatedly, while I was on council, you questioned me, that's why I'm addressing this. And repeatedly, I sent you emails with the names of people who had asked me questions.
Never received one email from you regarding anyone.
Oh, yes, you did. You, I have the copies of the emails.
Well, then you bring them up to me, and I'll be glad to look at them.
Right, because you never, you never read anything, so that, so it's...
So now you're implying that the mayor of the city of Castle Hills never reads anything?
I'm talking about the fact that I have emails that I sent you repeatedly with names...
Well, good, why don't you bring them up, and let's sit down and talk about it?
Why do I have to do it again? Look in your emails, they're there. Secondly, the chief just mentioned that he's been thanked by numerous people because of keeping the city safer. He says residents. Did you ask him what residents have thanked him? I'd like to know.
Yes, I did, as a matter of fact. Would you like for me to read those off?
Yes, please.
Chief, when we get finished with this, we won't take up the public's thing, but you produce her a list of the residents that contact you on a daily basis and thank you, okay, for that?
No, 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 I don't want to know thanking him. I know people thank him.
You're asking for it, Leslie?
No, 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 let me clarify what I'm talking about, and don't argue with me. I'm not on council anymore.
First of all, I don't take orders from you, Leslie. You are here at the will of being able to speak.
I don't take, I don't take orders from you either. You take orders from me now.
Okay, for you to attack me like this is uncalled-for. Okay, for you to attack me like this is uncalled for.
First of all, I did not say that I want to know who thanks the police department, I know very well the police department is thanked, I thank them on a regular basis. It's not a question of who thanks the police department, this is a specific thing about people thanking for being safer because we're patrolling more streets, and the reason that I bring that up is, as you know, I was very active in getting SB 631 passed, and one of the things that we were asked repeatedly at the legislature was this going to mean that we were going to have to increase the size of the police department, and the answer always was no. Joe Strauss was one of the people who questioned us, he didn't want to be promoting something that would cause the city of Terrell Hills, if they went for SB 631, for them to have to hire more people, since that's where he lives, and the chief told him no, that no point is not to increase the size of the police department, but rather that we're simply on these streets anyway, we're not patrolling the streets, we're simply going back and forth on our own streets, and if we see a law being broken, that's when we, the police have to stop somebody. So I do question that suddenly something else is the situation, but I would like to know the names of the people, only the people who are saying that we're being safer.
Please fill out an open records request, and we'll be glad to get it to you, that's how we do things here now.
Well, you, well, I'll tell you what.
We don't do things on just talking.
I'll tell you what, you fill out an open records request for me, and I'll recopy all the emails that I sent you, thank you.
Can I say one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
Ms. Winger and I, as I'm sure other, have had our differences, but I've also told her I respect her work and her thoughts and ideas, but instead of sending emails all around to whoever she wants to generate issues, I invite Ms. Winger, as I do everybody else, call, let's talk about some of your questions and some of your things in this email, recent email that you send around, I'd be glad to have answered your questions before it even got started, you got Mr. Gregory here, he'll do the same, so there's really no need for any of this, we're here to serve the city, and that means we are here to answer and serve everybody in the city to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments?
I'll go from last to first. Mr. Bueller was saying that we may be presented a bill for the underfunding of the employees' pension, that occurred, that occurred about six years ago, and we were, we were, the first bill, I think, was sixteen thousand and something dollars, I don't know when or if it has stopped, I'll have to check that out, but yes, they presented us with a bill that, that we've had to pay, I think that's still ongoing, Mike, do you, how much is that, Mike?
Down to, right now, Suzanne, what did we say, ten point eight, eleven point three? What are we down to?
I'm sorry?
On the, the additional levy from TMRS, instead of-
Oh, it's going down to eleven point seven.
That's been going on for about six years, five years?
Yeah.
So it's about been over fifty to sixty thousand dollars that we've had that levy up due to the shortfall of the state, so that's, it's not something that might happen, it's something that is happening. This thing about the roof, we gotta be very careful here, because we're looking, according to the figures, we're looking at a surplus of approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars. I just did a real rough estimation, if you had a hundred houses to rebate, four hundred dollars back, that's forty thousand dollars that'll have to go back, and that's gonna be interesting to try to track down all the people who get the rebates, because some people don't live here anymore, or a clawback to the census.
Are you, are you talking about grandfathering this?
No, I don't know exactly how you address this, if you're going to go and say the people who've paid this additional money should get the money back, we've gotta have, no?
Well, I mean, if, is that what you intended, Councilman Squire?
No, I did not intend that.
Okay. All right, I just wanted people to understand the math, and if you do, if we are going to change it based on a percentage, or go the Alamo Heights way and just say there's no fee, we ought to look at that and decide whether we should do it.
Why, go ahead.
May I comment, Doug?
Oh, sure.
I mean, you, and again, I broach the subject, and, and I'm glad to, but again, that's a, that's a complete discussion item, you know, I think, I think it'd be very hard to proctor that, to, to go ahead and try to issue some sort of refunds, a lot of them was taken care of by, a lot of it was taken care of by insurance companies, and so would that be even, even appropriate, and I'm not saying all was, but, but a lot of it was, and anything prior to the storm, you know, I'd really have a hard time with, to be honest with you, and, and so, in, in my thoughts, we didn't discuss it, but I think going forward, it's a ridiculous fee, the way it's structured right now.
Well, I agree. JR, Mr. Trevino, the last, let you know about the number of people, the last sentence census had, and I think, not the decade by decade, but they give an updated census, has us at around four thousand people, in 2000 it was forty-two hundred and two, in 1980 it was over five thousand. Let me see. With regard to a new line item of public infrastructure, I use, I believe just the opposite, I think the more you line item things, the more clarity you have of where things are going, it, it's very easy when everything's thrown into one great big jumble that you're not really sure where things are going. If you, for years, we've had a specific line for this type of pothole stuff, and as long, I, I see no reason why we shouldn't keep it there, and if, and for the simple thing, at the end of the year, if we have a surplus, throw that into the general fund, I just think that it's, it's an additional help to the council to know where money is going. With regard to sanitation, I looked at the sanitation, we were talking about this increase of one or two people and things like that. I would like a clarification, from fifteen to sixteen, we had an increase of twenty percent. Now, if I understood Mr. Harada, a lot of that came because we did cartographing and, and things like that, one-time events, Mike, Mr. Shans, do you know that? Was that twenty percent increase in the approved budget of sanitation of twenty percent from fifteen to sixteen based on one-time event items?
I would not think so. No, the, the cartograph would've come out of the street department.
So we had a twenty percent increase, without filling the two slots, we had a twenty percent increase in the budget from 2015 to 2016, and now we're having another twenty percent increase from 2016 to 2017, and the justification of that is we're filling two slots, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Well, I would really be curious what it was that caused it, because I'll go back into my notes and see if I can find it, 'cause I've got them somewhere, what caused that twenty percent increase, because we're looking at a forty percent increase in the sanitation department of their proposed budget in two years, now that is remarkable, now, it may be everything was needed, and we're just catching up, I have a hunch that may be it, but I would like to find out what it was from fifteen to sixteen that caused that twenty percent to occur.
Okay.
Now to the chief, yeah, that'd be you.
Mr. Gregory, before we move on, I think Mr. Paul has some information on that, I know I do, as far as, because there was some, there was some enact, in my opinion, there were some things that were corrected previously back in 2015, and I think 2016 corrected it, the way the costs were being billed out, the payroll was being billed out, because they were splitting payroll between two different budgets, and if I understand it, I think Ms. File put it under one budget to more accurately reflect how the payroll should be done, and Suzanne, you could probably help confirm that.
Yeah, but-
Because it, because it needed to be cleaned up, and it was a mess, and yeah, it showed an increase, but it was being hidden, and, and it brought it forward.
Good, I, I, that's great, I'd like, good follow-up on that.
We had that percentage coming out of the, of the special funds.
All right, a big pardon?
Now, we brought all of that into the general budget, so that was an increase, that accounted for a big increase right there.
And that was at our last, one of our budget meetings, when we went through that too, so it should be in your notes.
I'll double-check that. Chief, this expansion of, and I went to Austin and helped for whatever it was worth, get the bill passed, this two-hundred-yard increasing of our parameters, which is apparently maybe bringing on the need of an additional person, is the ultimate, is the benefit of the amount of fines that we're bringing in of this two-hundred-yard increase, because I think I heard you say most of the monies are traffic-related, they were, is that equal to less than or greater than the salary of an increase to have one new officer?
Well, I, I think we're getting into some gray area, so I want to be perfectly clear on how this is working. We are being reimbursed by the HIDA program for our salary, we have also seen an increase, as mentioned, accidents, calls for service, criminal cases are up twenty-seven percent. Since we didn't have a baseline to work off of from SB 631, with that being the only thing that has changed in the police department, in addition to some additional population through San Antonio growing, which the end result being, police department being more active and busier, why not capitalize on a over forty thousand dollars reimbursement, utilize that in the police department for a position, I thought that that was a pretty crafty move to make, to assist with the needs of the citizens in the police department simultaneously. So when we get into SB 631, what did it produce, did it support another position, did it not support another position, that's difficult to say, but what we can say is what I've been mentioning all along, there's a high increase of criminal cases in the city of Castle Hills, there's an increase in accidents, there's an increase in narcotics, there's an increase in calls for service, the only thing that's changed is SB 631, we have an opportunity that we're being reimbursed over forty thousand dollars a year from the HIDA program, why not utilize those funds to bring an additional officer onboard to use as I see fit, which could be a little bit on patrol, could be a little bit investigations.
How long is the reimbursement gonna happen?
Well, the reimbursement happened for 2016, so we have benefited in 2016 for this position.
I mean, is this a perpetual reimbursement?
It has already been approved for 2017, and just to clarify, I called HIDA today and said, are we good for 2017, and what's the cost, and she said, yes, you'll get a letter, it's approved, forty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, am I right, Suzanne?
I've had several conversations with Gina over at the HIDA Department of DEA, we are approved for 2017, the last time I talked with her, I asked her that question, because it concerns me as well, is this something that we can count on, and we would never count on it anyway, because it's a possibility of it not coming in, is the possibility that we will lose it, in her words, it was very remote, that's about as much of a guarantee as any one of us is gonna be able to give you on a project like this.
Well, then, would you say it'd be reasonable to say, with the reimbursement versus the cost for the additional employee, we more than pay back, we more, we, we get more than it costs for a new officer through reimbursements and additional traffic fines?
Well, I'm not gonna get into, into the traffic fines, but I can tell you that the benefit to the city is greater by making this move than not making it.
Okay, good, that's what I wanted to find out.
That's it?
Thank you, thank you, Douglas. Frank, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, just one quick thing, I believe I read the information correct, that even though the city employees are getting a three percent COLA increase, I believe the police department's only going up by two point five eight percent, and this is also including the additional officer, and again, the additional officer isn't for revenue, the additional officer is, we got problems around our city. Chief, how many additional miles are we patrolling as a result of SB 631?
Don't quote me, but I think it's five point seven.
Five point, okay, all right, thank you, Ms.
Is that correct, that they're getting a less of a COLA increase in the first position?
No, it is not. Your overall increase to the department is two point five eight, that's only because there have been decreases in other expenditures, the COLA is the same for all employees across the board unless noted, and all of you have those notations.
Thank you.
Mr. Squire, did you have any comments or anything for the city?
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
No further questions.
Trevino?
I think Mr. Bueller had asked the question if the city has reserves, and from what I was told by Ms. File, typically, what I learned in my classes is three months of reserves is normal, and the city of Castle Hills has six months, so we're almost double, is that correct, Mr. Shans?
That's correct.
Okay, and I just want to add that I've been on a couple of police ride-alongs, and I can understand how time-intensive it can be taking somebody down to the magistrate as required when you arrest somebody, and I could see Sergeant Wagner nodding his head because he knows that you go as fast as they move down there, so which can be anywhere from hour to two hours, that being said, I would feel a lot better as a resident and as a supporter of the police department, knowing that if one of the officers was downtown, taking care of an officer, that the remaining officer in the city has additional support if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, anything else? I'd like to make a couple of comments here, first, regarding the building inspections, I was, had the opportunity to have lunch with Mark Pardane today, chief, will you, will you instruct everybody what Mark's position is? He's in charge of insurance fraud.
He's a retired sergeant in Castle Hills, and he worked for Texas Department of Insurance as a fraud investigator sergeant.
Thank you. Before council decides, I mean, this, this is one thing, believe it or not, I agree on, this, this roofing thing is, is way out of whack, and whether we go ahead and absorb the cost of it, or whether we charge exactly what is needed to be charged, he informed me today that just in the 78213 area code, there's sixteen fraud cases brought by the state against roofers in this area, so what that means is, these people came in, nobody had to have a permit, they came in, they went to somebody, they got their money, and they, they took off, and, and the city, you know, they, of course, when they found out that they wouldn't come back, then of course they filed a police report, but we didn't know who they were, what they were doing in the area, what's, what's going on, so whether council decides to have a nominal fee, or just go ahead and absorb it into the city budget, I would suggest that we, we keep this sort of regulation going to protect our residents.
Can I add something real quick, sir?
No, go ahead.
I just want to add that permits, generally speaking, aren't insurance, permits to drive, permits to carry a weapon, permits to have a vehicle operate on a roadway, all provide a method to make sure that there's some safeguards in effect, but none of them are insurance as to what's gonna happen.
Correct, okay, secondly, I would like to thank the people involved, Mike, we're gonna start with you, for, for bringing all this in, for tying it up all together, and each one of the departments, Rick, for, no matter what we decide on your two employees, for establishing the fact that on several locations, occasions, I've seen a man driving down the street when one of your guys was sick, driving the truck, and actually picking up the trash by himself, now, you can tell me how many times that's happened, but it's, it's unfortunate to see that when it happens. Jerry, for, for your ability to look ahead and be broad-minded and thinking on the fact that we brought in someone to train and to get the feel of what it's like being a chief on a temporary basis, and I, I really appreciate you doing that, because that's forward-thinking, that's looking ahead, and I would be surprised if anyone up here at council, and I'm speaking, or wait a minute, I'd be surprised, I'm not surprised, that you would do something like that based on the, you know, of your forward-thinking and what, how, how you- and what, how, how you want to make sure that the city is going in the right direction. Chief, your ability to plan ahead. I don't know how many council members have been able to get up their stairs and see exactly what these guys do on a daily basis. I asked the chief the other day, what's the increase in violent crime? We're talking violent. Guns, guns out the window, heavy amounts of narcotics, all this kind of stuff. We had two officers Saturday night. This is happening once a week in our city. Once a week. You know, this isn't Mayberry anymore. And our main arteries, which are 410, La Ciel Selma, Blanco, are seeing this increase of crime. I know why, and I'm going to, I'm going to say it because I'm able to. I know why that the chief can't tell you exactly what the numbers are on the increase of fines